Here.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Here.
Councilmember George.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barnage.
Here.
Mayor Ray Russum.
Here. Would you please silently join me in a moment of reflection? Thank you. Tonight, we have the Aurora Grande Lions Club to lead us in the flag salute. Gentlemen.
Okay. Face the flag, please. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And why don't you tell us all the things you all have been up to lately?
Yeah, half an hour, okay? Anyway. Now, obviously, this time of the year, one of the great things that we've done recently was the Harvest Festival, and I know Jim knows all about that, and it went really well this year, and we were real pleased with that. But then again, one of the other things is Turkey Trot just happened with the Recreation Department. And, you know, watching the participants race around the track, particularly when they're about that high, is really, really great. We got boys' and girls' basketball tournaments coming up, starting tomorrow, and then bell ringing is coming up. But one of our favorites, and let Art just take a minute and talk to you about that.
Yes, come the first Wednesday in February of 2024, which is the 7th of February, and we're not doing it the following week because that's Valentine's Day, and my wife says you're not having a student speech contest. So we have it on a yearly basis, and the topics tend to be relevant. Usually, something might be a little bit, you know, challenging, like social media, its role in our society. And historically, especially prior to the pandemic, we would invite somebody either from the city or the city council to come and participate as a judge. We tend to have three to four judges serve, and you judge the student speakers. We have a maximum of four. And our contest begins at 6 o'clock promptly, and we're usually done by 7:30, 8 o'clock at the latest, and we follow up with a dinner. And so we would like to extend an invitation to the city council or the city of Aurora Grande to nominate among one of yourselves to serve as a judge. And you could do it tonight, or let Krista, I think it's Krista Reynolds, Kendra Reynolds know who your nominee might be, and I'll get you the necessary materials. Thank you. By the way, my name's Art Delga-Dio. So, and I'm the, one of the vice presidents, and I've been doing this for quite some time. And I retired from the Santa Maria Benita School District back in 2008, when I was a lot younger. So here I am.
Weren't we all?
Yes.
I have been a judge at that several times, and it continues to fall on a night for sanitation district. So perhaps Kendra can organize that. We can't discuss it tonight because it's not agendized, but we can have her take care of that.
Thanks.
Thank you. This takes us to item five. This is agenda review, and let's start with the agenda review itself. We've got a couple of notices or notations here. First of all, I would like, and I'm sure the council will agree to, for item 14, adjournment to adjourn in honor of Warren Hoag, the passing of Warren Hoag, who served the city for 30 years as part of our Architectural Review Committee. So that's that. And then we have, I suppose, a late development in terms of item 10A that both myself and Mayor Protem will be conflicted out of that item because we live within 500 feet. So I think what we'll do is we'll switch items 10A and 13. So we'll do 13 before we get to 10B and 12A and 12B, which is Council Communications, because I have communications I'd like to get to the entire council. Then we'll go 10B. I'm sorry. One more time. Sorry, I forgot. Take a look at 10s. Yeah, we'll go to 10B, then 12A, 12B, 12C, 12D, and then 10A. So Mayor Protem and I will step down after item 12D. Would anyone like to volunteer to chair when both of us has gone? Oh, you will, won't you? There you go. All right. So we'll have the fancy reorganization then before that happens. All right, Jim, so you're on. That worked out perfectly. I could tell.
I don't know if I'm giving that up.
Or are we going to have one of those?
Yeah.
And just a reminder to use your microphones when you're...
Okay. Does anyone else have any need to, is that okay, an okay switch with everyone? Any other needs to move anything else around? Okay, then we will proceed, not as published, but switching items 10A and 13. Closed session announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the closed session that was held on November 28th, the city council adjourned that evening at 8:44 PM. There was no reportable action at that time for the agendized closed session.
Great, thank you. And for item 5B, I will move that all ordinance presented at the meeting shall be read in title only, and all further readings be waived.
Second.
We have motion of second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us directly to special presentations, and we have introduction of a new employee, Julie Hawkins, Deputy City Clerk Communications Coordinator, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Madsen.
All right, I'm so excited to introduce to your council and the public Julie Hawkins, the city's new Deputy City Clerk and Communications Coordinator. Julie is a Central Coast resident of 15 years and a Wisconsin native. She attended Humboldt State University, earning a bachelor's degree in natural resources planning. Her background also includes experience as the Board Clerk for Scotia Community Services District in Humboldt County, where she served for six years. So I'm very excited about that. Additionally, Julie and her husband Kevin are small business owners in Grover Beach and are actively engaged in community activities. Together, they love exploring the outdoors with their senior dogs, Justin and Ash. Julie is also a former professional ice skater and values carving out time to get on the ice. We'll talk about that more later. It's really fun. A little Disney on Ice plug. Julie's commitment to community outreach, public engagement, and local governance aligns with her aspirations to contribute meaningfully to the city of Aurora Grande. In only her eighth day with the city, Julie is already contributing in many ways, and I'm thrilled to have her as part of our Aurora Grande team.
I just want to say thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm so happy to be here, and it's a pleasure to meet you all. Thank you.
And as is customary, although not required, would anyone like to, let's open up public comment. Would anyone like to speak on item 6A? And seeing no one, check in with the clerk. Are you seated?
I am seated. If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, then we'll close public comment. We'll move forward to item 6B. This is Interim City Manager Communications.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to stand in a little bit for our Rec Department. Just give you a few updates there. This is just a great holiday time. A lot of people coming into the city, people that just want to visit or visiting families. So I just wanted to go over a few things really quickly. I'm not sure if it's the most wonderful time of the year, but it's one of them. We have a beautiful village that everyone's taking advantage of, and we've had, just like the Lions Club talked about, the Jingle Bell Dash Holiday Parade. We had Breakfast with Santa on the 9th. That was a huge hit, very well attended. Holiday Boutique and Art in the Park. I was there for that. That was a really great event. A lot of vendors, and there was a lot of people attending and having a good time. And then December 10th was the Tree Lighting and Snow Event. I'll get to some more photos, but this is just a quick shot of our Jingle Bell Dash. And some shots of the Holiday Parade. 42 floats, lots of volunteers, so it went really smoothly. We have a really great coordination plan with Rec, Public Works, and our Police Department and Fire. So it's really safe, and we are really fortunate to have that. There's Breakfast with Santa. That was, again, really well attended. Tar Creek Ranch allowed us to use their facility, donated the space, and Knights of Columbus were there to make the pancakes, and there were quite a few volunteers as well. These are some shots of Art in the Park. So it was held over at Heritage Square Park. There are 40 local artisans, live music, and yeah, it was just a beautiful day there. This is our second annual tree lighting event. This was really well attended as well. Lots of snow, 20 tons of snow, if you can imagine that. You can kind of see all the kids playing in it. There are 24 volunteers. There was a lot of sponsors. You can see them. Some of their logos to the right. We had some really generous donations there. Toyota, San Luis Obispo, Rugged Radio, just to name a couple. RRM, Art in the Park, PG&E, the POA for Aurora Grande, the Police Officers Association, NANS Bookstore, Peak WiFi, and the Oliver Group in Verdun. And one last one, two more, Dana Reserve and AWE Always Energy. Again, it was just such generosity there, and Rugged Radio was really an integral part of that. You can see up in the top corner, the mayor with Santa. I just want to say that the mayor was really instrumental in getting this event to become such a hit. So many people attended, so much fun. She was very involved, and we really appreciate that partnership. This is just some shots of the volunteers that we have carried down in that globe. You know, I was driving through town after the parade, and she was up really early picking up trash. So just a very dedicated employee, making things go smoothly. And that's it. That's the end of my update, so I can answer any questions.
All right, let's check in with the council and see if anyone has questions. Okay, questions?
I have a question, not about all that good stuff, though. I have a question about the jackhammering. So I actually heard it last night, and I live pretty far away, but I just shut my slider. So, and I see what's going on out here. So is there an update, Bill, that's... I know that we heard sort of the end of the month at our last meeting, two weeks ago. I want to know if that had changed at all.
No, that's about the timeframe still. The jackhammering you heard last night was the work that was going on in the crosswalks right next to City Hall. That's going to take probably another four working days. And we just appreciate everyone being patient. We're almost done. We're at the last leg of this project. We're getting the crosswalks finished, and then a few more of the tile bands, and then we should be done. But yeah, we're still about 10 days out from that.
Okay. And it goes until 1:00 AM now? I know we backed it off a little bit. I couldn't remember the time. 1?
That's true.
Okay.
Usually, they start, they stop earlier, but they needed to catch up on some work and get both of those crosswalks hollowed out, taken out, and then pour concrete. But that jackhammering is in the asphalt. But we're hoping that we can just keep plugging away and be done with that for another 50 years or so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up on that, Bill. Presumably, there'll be stopping during the holidays. What is the stoppage? I would presume they're not going to be out there on Christmas Eve and Christmas night. Like, where, what's the stoppage time?
You know, I can defer to Shannon if we get really deep into it, but yes, there's always union holidays. So those days are Christmas Eve, Christmas, New Year's, New Year's Eve. So there'll be some stopping in there, but for the most part, I'd have to look at a calendar. But we'd like, we're trying to have them keep going so that we can just finish it off. But there'll be some times where they'll take breaks and allow kind of the holidays to sink in.
Are they working on weekend nights or just weeknights?
Just weeknights.
Okay, so with Christmas on a Monday, there'll be probably a few days break there?
That's right. Yes.
Okay.
And then we have some rain coming, it looks like, so that will hopefully not delay the project much, but that's a potential.
Thank you. And comments?
I just have to say that that parade was amazing. I have never seen so many people on our streets before, and they were deep. It wasn't just on the sidewalk. It was like sidewalk, and then all the way into the storefronts. And the alley had people like filled up the alley. It was incredible. And what I noticed, I'm going to say two Harvest Festivals ago, is that we had more young families, which makes sense because on Sunday, it was so many young families, the Santa. So I just wanted to embrace all the young families that are in Aurora Grande now, and they just bring a light and life to our community that I cherish. And Mayor, thank you so much. I think the tree lighting was your brainchild. It wasn't just that you were helping. It was your idea and your event. So thank you for bringing that to our community.
And thanks to Bill for hearing me out when I said I want to run some electrical to a tree. And I just want to, I had this under Council Communications, but I'll add it right now. And Bill did read through some of those sponsors, but I want to make sure every single one of them gets read because it was literally five figures worth of donations, and we could not do it without that. That's not city funds for that snow. And, you know, Rugged donated $2,500 when I told them what I needed to get to for my total, and they said, we'll do it. We want to make sure the kids are taken care of. So going in the whole group here, the ones in the center were individuals, which is, you might recognize some names here. Lincoln and Dax Hayashi-Russum, which are my grandsons, and Jordan Hayden-Glynes, Arroyo Fresh Incorporated. That's the Saratari family, Akayo Saratari Trust. So they'd made two donations separately, and myself, and then all of the businesses that Bill mentioned there. And I want to also just give a quick plug to Always Energy. I had never met them before until that night, and they've also donated significant amount of work for the pickleball courts in the neighborhood of about $10,000's worth of value there as well. They've been stepping up for Parks and Rec, and that was new to me. Also, it's just the community coming together. This afternoon, on my way to the meeting here, I had a local person that everybody knows, but I'll leave him off so I don't embarrass him, texting me, telling me there's been kids playing in that snow all week, and it's still there. It hasn't all melted. And there's a snowman there, apparently. He's going to go try and take a picture for me tomorrow. But this was some, this is one of the privileges of being a city council member and a mayor, is we get to dream up these things. And if we can find a way to pay for them, Public Works is ready to hear us out. And it's, I think it's something that will become a big tradition. And I definitely want to give Sheridan, Director Bulkin, a giant shout out because last year, it was a proof of concept. This year, it was an event. And those, I don't know if you can see them in the background there, but the bounce houses were like two stories high. One of the slides, it was insane. They asked me if I wanted to go down. I said, absolutely not. Nobody wants to hear the mayor scream like a little girl. So that's not happening. It was wonderful. It was wonderfully attended. It was just so great. So grateful to Public Works and to Parks and Rec who make that happen. All I do is make calls and raise some money, but they did the work. So big, big kudos to staff. Okay, so that is the City Manager Report, but let's go ahead and open up public comment. If anyone's got anything to say about the public, excuse me, the City Managers' report? So this is just the City Managers' report.
Yes, I was making a comment regarding the crosswalk changeover. I've noticed it's a lot less noticeable now when you press the button to cross the crosswalk coming up here. I know why the lights had to go away, but it would be nice if we could find a way to project light onto the crosswalk when the lights are flashing so that it's more noticeable again.
Thank you. Anyone else? I see no one in chambers. Check in with the City Clerk.
Any members of the public online would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Okay, then we'll close public comment. We'll move on to item seven, City Council Reports. I was not here at the last meeting, so I do have a quick report out with regard to sanitation district, and that is that the engineering for the repairs are underway, and the agreement for who is responsible for the, we don't know what the number's going to be, but it could be upwards of $1 million for the repair that's going to happen over there is going to be fully borne by the engineering firm. So it is not going to be to a cost, a cost to the ratepayers or to the district. So that is going to get taken care of. We're going through all the rigmarole to do that, but that was a pretty significant update, so I wanted to make sure that everybody heard that. Community comments and suggestions. This is your chance to come talk to us about items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda, come on forward. Please keep your comments to three minutes and address the council as one body.
Good evening. I stand before you tonight to ask you why you would hire an individual for a city manager position who has never been an assistant city...
This is, this is a agendized item. This is item 12...
Okay.
12A, is that right? Thank you. Item 12A, thank you. Anyone else have an item not on tonight's agenda?
Hi, I'm Shirley Horcheck, and I'm here tonight to talk, as I have before, about Aurora Grande's public art and our partnership with the city to do, to paint the utility boxes. And the reason I came tonight, and I'm hoping people actually listen to this or watch it online, I want to thank the community on behalf of the artists for their support of the artists as they've been painting these boxes. The support has been tremendous. The last lady that finished her box said over 100 people waved, said, "Good job. Thank you. Love it." And that means so much to them. The only reason they're doing it is because they want to give back to their community. So I get nothing but wonderful comments back from them. So I wanted to thank the community for supporting them, and I hope you continue to do that. I have three more in the works right now, so keep cheering them on. We also, we did have a little unfortunate incident. The lady who finished painting her box on Friday night, Saturday night, it was tagged with graffiti. And Sunday morning, I just about ran off the road as I was going to the market, and I had to pull over, call the artist first because I knew she was going to be devastated. Called her first, then I contacted the mayor, who contacted Bill, and I so appreciate the fact she was very devastated. But by the time I woke up Monday morning, it had all been cleared off, and that was wonderful. Thank you. Thank you to the city for doing such a tremendous job. She was able to touch it up, recode it, and all looks good, and we hope that never happens again. I also, as just one of your community members, want to say I am absolutely dazzled at the parklets you're putting in. They are really an amazing design. They look so nice. And I hope it makes the difference for the businesses to keep the community vibrant in the small town. Really appreciate it. And I went to Snow Night and loved every minute. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on items not on tonight's agenda? All right, let's check in with City Clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, so we'll close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. We have quite a mouthful on the consent agenda this evening. Collectively, this is items 9A through 9J. So first, I'll check in with the council to see if there's any item that needs to be, has questions or to be pulled for separate consideration. Jim? No? Okay. So then we'll go ahead and open up public comment. Does anyone have any comment on items 9A through 9I? Yes, thank you. I need glasses. 9I?
Good evening, Patricia Welsh. I'm not sure if this is the same street sweeping company we have used in the past. The comment I would like to make, Bill's well aware of the problem we've had out on Pearwood with dirt coming off the hill and accumulating after years. Some dirt still falls down. They're not sweeping that side of the street at the end of Pearwood. Again, we've got a pretty good accumulation of garbage and stuff happening there. And the other area I'm seeing is Struther Park. Are they to be street sweeping our parks? Because I'm now seeing, we've got a great city employee who went over there the other day and cleaned it all up, and I thanked him for doing that because otherwise, the pine needles and leaves and stuff just fill up really bad around the curb. That's it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else on the consent agenda?
Jessica?
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And there are no raised hands.
All right, then we'll close public comment. And Mr. Robison? Two questions there. First, is this the same company we've had before?
It is not the same company. The same company has been acquired by a larger national company. I should reword that. The company that we used previously over the past five years has been acquired by a national company. They did bid on this, have a bid for the street sweeping contract, but they were not the lowest bid. We were able to acquire the lowest bid from a local street sweeping company, S&amp;P Street Sweeping and Maintenance. So we are looking forward to having a really close relationship with them. When people come in and have complaints or concerns about the sweeping of their street, we've made sure that we're going to be able to have those issues resolved quickly, and we'll take a look at those issues on Pearwood and Struther.
And do they usually sweep the parking lots?
They do.
Okay.
Yes, so they go through our sports complex, our parks and our park parking lots, and they sweep those out once a month.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. All right, so remember that we would normally be moving to item 10A, but because we've reorganized tonight, we are inserting 13...
Mayor, we need a motion and a second.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Madam Mayor, I would move for approval of items 9A through 9I.
Second.
We have a motion of second. We have ordinance here. Do we need to read the title? Okay. All right. Any discussion? Can we roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Barnage.
Yes.
Councilmember George.
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest.
Yes.
Councilmember Guthrie.
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russum.
Yes, and forgive me. Again, moving item 13 here. I was contacted by one of the business owners in the west side of the village, and they were really concerned about the appearance of a lack of parking and knowing that there isn't a lack of parking a lot of the time. The council has directed several times to have wayfinding signs put around the village to help find, people find parking. And I would like to bring this forward officially, and I didn't talk to you about this because this just came forward yesterday, and forgive me, Bill. I wouldn't hit you with that without talking to you first, in having wayfinding signs and a program come forward as a staff report, because we've given this direction for literally probably four years. And I just want this to be very deliberate, and it needs to be done, and the business community is asking for it. So I'm hoping that I can get a second on that.
I would second that.
Thank you. Okay, so is that enough to, or you and I can talk later? Okay, so is that enough to, or you and I can talk later? Or you probably know what I mean.
I do know what you mean. We are actually starting on that. We've had a lot of projects kind of come into a condensed period of time, but we haven't forgot about that. Our associate engineer is working on that, and after we get some conceptual designs on the location and the design of the signs themselves, we'll start to show the, the council what those look like and then go through the ARC process and make sure that we're hitting the mark on that.
And when can I report that that would be coming to the, to the business owner? No offense, but we've heard that a lot, so I want to just make sure I can give them-
Thank you. I would say that we'll be able to come to the, to the, to like the village business group?
No, it's not that group, no.
Okay.
It's just a single, I just want to be able to report back saying it's coming back, but are we talking a month? Are we talking two months? Are we talking six months?
No, I would say we're probably in the beginning of March.
Okay, so perhaps by then, if they haven't heard anything on a public meeting by then?
That's right.
Mayor Protem?
So I have a question. So if that's already being developed, can it just go to ARC and not come back to us as a formal item?
No, it can, that, that's fine if it's already in the works. I'm just-
Do you promise, Phil?
Yeah.
I do promise, but I would like to make sure-
I want a formal report out to the council at this point. That's what I want.
That, that's, that's exactly right. So we will do that. We'll show you some graphics and locations and the conceptual design, and then we'll move forward with ARC after that.
Yeah, I do want it reported at the council level, only for accountability, and no offense to staff, everybody's overworked, but this is long, long past due, so I want, I want that to be on the radar and coming forward to us. Doesn't have to be decision-making. It can be a special presentation or something like that. Okay. Any other council communications? All right, then that takes us forward then to item 10B. 10B is a public hearing to consider introduction of an ordinance amending Title 13 of Arroyo Grande Municipal Code regarding the water shortage contingency plan and finding this action exempt from CEQA. And I see our city engineer coming up. Hello, Ms. Sweeney? It's all yours. I shall delay some more and say happy holidays while we wait. Rain is good. All right, there we go. Yeah, potentially John Lindsay is saying on the 19th. Yeah. All right, are we all ready?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Shannon Sweeney, city engineer and our public works director, and I'm here to bring forth a public hearing to consider an ordinance to amend the municipal code relating to the water shortage contingency plan. So the California Water Code requires urban water suppliers such as ourself to update our urban water management plan and water shortage contingency plan every five years. Back in June, staff brought forward both of these documents in a public hearing, and both were approved by council with one modification, and the modification was made to the water shortage contingency plan as it relates to a stage-two water shortage emergency. So this public hearing is to modify the municipal code in order to address those changes in the water shortage contingency plan. So the section of the municipal code is a lot of words. It is Section 13.07.030(c)(2), and this is the, how water is allocated in a stage-two water emergency, and the engineer in me needed to take all of these words and put them into tables to make them easier for me to read. Maybe it makes them easier for everybody else to read as well. So the next slide shows a summarization of that, and whoever was on City Council who, who noticed this, just very insightful, as the municipal code is currently written, it's basically minimum number of, sorry, maximum number of residents. If you have five people in a household, then they're allocated 150 gallons per household per day, whereas if you have between six and seven members of the household, it's 250, and eight or greater, it's 350. Now, looking at it as gallons per household is one way, but if you look over in gallons per person per day, what you'll notice is that in a household that has five people, the gallons per person per day is only 30, whereas if you have six or seven, you get between 36 and 42, or eight or greater, 44 or less. What that means is if you have a household that only has, that has five people, you are getting significantly less as a ratio of the amount of water per person. So the recommended amendment changes literally one number in all of those words. It changes the number of the allocation from five down to four for the households that receive gallons per household per day of 150. So what that means is that for the, the low number, the 150 gallons per household per day with only a household of four, then it's 38 or more gallons per person per day, which is a lot closer to the amount of water that the other households would get. So this is an equity issue when you're allocating water during a stage-two water shortage emergency. So I'm going to show you all those words again in the next slide, and what you can see is it literally changes one word. So if you go down to where you see the, the red text where the households with over instead of five, which is crossed out, it changes it to four people to provide more equity when we're rationing water in a particular shortage. And I'm open to any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Let's start over here. Mr. Guthrie, any questions? Any questions? Mayor Protem? Nor do I. This is continued business practically. So let's go ahead and open up public comment. Would anyone like to speak on item 10B?
I just wanted to compliment the, the skill and precision of that change.
Thank you. She used the word "skill and precision." Did you like that?
I did.
We don't often get those kinds of comments. Thank you.
But I will remind you that it was the city council that recommended the change in the first place.
Let's check in online and see if anyone online would like to speak.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. And there are no raised hands.
All right, we'll close public comment. Bring this back to the council for consideration, possible adoption. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will move an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arroyo Grande amending Section 13.07.030 of the Arroyo Grande Municipal Code regarding water shortage contingency planning and finding ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second. Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barnich?
Yes.
Mayor Vay Russell?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to item 12A. This is consideration of appointment of city manager and approval of an employment agreement. And turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Rosen.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm pleased to announce for the city council's consideration this evening, the appointment of Matthew J. Downing for the vacant city manager position in Arroyo Grande. So as stated in the staff report, the city completed a robust executive recruitment process with mosaic public partners that resulted in over 30 applicants for the city manager position. The city council previously provided direction to negotiate a conditional offer of employment and specific terms of an employment agreement with Mr. Downing. That employment agreement that has been negotiated is attached to the staff report for the city council's consideration this evening. Under the Brown Act, the city is required to provide an oral report before taking any final action on local agency executive compensation, and that includes any salary, salary schedules, and compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits. So at this time, I will read out a number of the substantive terms from the attached negotiated employment contract pursuant to Government Code Section 54953. So the compensation that would be paid to Mr. Downing would be $235,900 annually, paid on a pro-rata basis. Mr. Downing would receive cost of living adjustment to his salary consistent with any negotiated increases applicable to unrepresented management employees. If Mr. Downing were terminated without cause by the city council, he would receive the equivalent of six months of salary in severance pay and benefits over the time he is not employed. Mr. Downing would receive all health and welfare benefit, benefits applicable to other city employees and $2,200 in deferred compensation annually. Mr. Downing would receive $150,000 in a term life insurance policy, a monthly cellphone allowance, and $500 per month in an automobile allowance, and Mr. Downing would receive 13 years of service credit towards his annual paid leave. That would earn him 33 days or 264 hours per year of leave in addition to a 56-hour initial one-time grant of paid leave, and Mr. Downing would also receive 40 hours of management leave each calendar year that would not accrue from year to year. So with that, those are the substantive terms associated with the Brown Act requirements. I'm happy to answer any public questions from the council, and following any public comment, the city's recommendation is to improve the employment agreement.
Thank you. Let's check in with the council and see if anyone has questions. To my right? Okay, to my left? All right, then let's go ahead and open up public comment. I have a feeling we're going to hear one. Come on up. Thank you for, I know you know the process, Patty.
Good evening, Patty Welsh. I stand before you tonight to ask you why you would hire an individual for city manager position who has never been an assistant city manager or a city manager. Didn't the city spend thousands of dollars on a national search for a candidate who is experienced and qualified, yet you hire somebody who possesses neither of these attributes? Diane Thompson was hired for a position of city manager with no prior experience and was later terminated by the council with no reason given to the public. Jim Bergman was then hired for the position of city manager, again with no prior experience, and quit, walking out in the middle of the day. Whitney McDonald was then hired for the position of city manager. She left for a position in Slow as an assistant city manager. With the recent hire of Matt Downing, who once again has no city manager experience or qualification, why does the city continue to hire inexperienced personnel? Does this make financial sense? It's hard to support a city that is asking for a 1% sales tax increase when you can't even successfully hire and keep a city manager. How can we have confidence in our city council to spend appropriately when you continue to make poor financial decisions? When Steve Adams was a city manager, there wasn't an assistant city manager. Why does the city feel the need to pay out exorbitant salaries only to have people be fired, walk off the job, or quit? Don't you think it's time to have, hire a qualified, experienced candidate? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on item 12A? It didn't recognize you without a jacket on, hiding back there. Hello, welcome to Arroyo Grande.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council. My name's Ben Fine, and I'm Director of Public Works for the city of Pismo Beach. However, my comments tonight are personal and do not reflect the opinions of the city I represent. I was going to make a joke, but in light of the previous speaker, I'm not going to do that. I've known Matt for about five years now, since he left you the first time, and I've gotten to know him. He is a colleague. I am honored to say he's become a friend. Should you go through with hiring Matt Downing, I was going to ask you not to as a joke, but I'm not going to do that. Should you go through with hiring him, I can tell you are going to end up with a city manager who is highly ethical, who is honest, who is fair, who will do everything in his power to build bridges in the community and amongst the staff. He will do everything he can to motivate the staff, to help build morale, to elevate morale higher than it already is. He will do everything he can to fight to accomplish the city council's goals, and despite the fact he has not been a city manager, I will predict he will, will be the best city manager that the city has seen in a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on item 12A? Let's check in online, see if anyone would like to comment from there.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, then we'll close public comment, bring this back to the council, and I'm going to guess that there's maybe some commentary that may happen this evening, so I'll check in with everybody individually. Councilmember Seacrest, any comments to make?
I think we made a great choice, and welcome.
And Councilmember George?
I have lots of comments. One, I would have loved to hear the joke. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we'll indulge and open up public comment. I know the drill.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name's Ben Fine. I'm Director of Public Works for the city of Pismo Beach. However, the comments I make here tonight are my own personal comments and do not reflect those of the city. I implore you to not hire Matthew Downing tonight. That's how it was going to start, and then it was going to wrap up by saying, after all those nice things I said about him, why would I ask you not to hire him? That is because of the hole it is going to leave in our executive team, and we will all miss him.
And we will close public comment on that note. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I have had the pleasure, and Patty has been to a lot of our, our meetings, working with Mr. Downing for many, many years on the Planning Commission, and there is, there are few people in this world that have a quiet power to them, and I believe that Mr. Downing possesses that. He is very eloquent in his speech. He is respectful. He is authoritative. He is very specific in the work that he does, and he does it very well. Detail-oriented, that's what I was going to say, not specific, detail-oriented. I have every confidence and every belief that Mr. Downing will do an amazing job here for our city. And yes, he may not have ever been a city manager, but that doesn't mean he can't be a great one, and I believe he can be a great one, and I believe that he will serve our community well because he's a part of our community. We didn't bring him in from somewhere who doesn't know who we are and what we're about and what our people are about, and he even knows Patty Welsh, so I'm sure they'll have lots of conversations. So I'm looking forward to Mr. Downing proving Patty wrong tonight.
And Councilmember Barnich?
That happened already?
It did.
Sad. Famous for so, so short a time. We have to trade seats. No, it's okay. Do it at the end. So really excited to have Mr. Downing back in Arroyo Grande where he belongs forever, and I have all the faith that he will do an excellent job. I've worked with Matt before. His integrity is unmatched, his work ethic is unmatched, professional, a very sweet person who has all of the education and history of Arroyo Grande, and he knows people that are here, and he knows what they want and what they don't want, and so he's very intimately involved and was with the city and the residents. So very excited for him to join our family here, and I know he's going to do an excellent job, and he's, and he's just perfect for the job. So that's it. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yeah, so first of all, I certainly understand the public's concern with, we do have some history here with, with difficulty in that position. I will point out that Diane Thompson had over 10 years of experience as a city manager and the city codetie, and so experience doesn't always, always translate. And we certainly would, I'll be careful here about closed session, we certainly considered that when, when we reviewed the, I believe, 31 applicants that we had for this position. And I think it would be, I think I'll just put it this way, there's, you know, there's, there is management experience and there's what I'll call property experience, because I'm in the hotel business, and many, many times, you can't believe how many times the assistant manager becomes a general manager, not because they were, or even had front desk clerk, but because they, they know what's going on in this particular location in this business, and I believe that's exactly where we went with this decision, that that Mr. Downing has that specific experience here. I believe that if he had been on staff when this opening came, that, that we wouldn't have even done a national search. But, so I'll just say that's my thinking and the direction we went, and I'm, I'm sure we, we made a great choice here, and we'll be, be even happier 10 years from now when, when we're still going. Thank you.
And I want to address that same thing. Myself and Councilmember Guthrie, Mayor Protem Guthrie were on the subcommittee for bringing forth names, and I mean, I'll just speak directly to you, Patty. I went into this thinking that-
I went into this thinking that that's what I wanted, was somebody coming in with a decade of experience. And I can't, again, say anything about closed session, but I can say that Mr. Downing earned this fair and square. He did not get any, no, he did not get any freebies. We, we had that nationwide search to validate, that validates this choice. We had great candidates come forward, great discussion with this council about the needs, both current and future of Arroy Grande. One of the holes that we need filled, that only, the only applicant that could do that is with regard to institutional memory here. And we've had a lot of turnover in our, in our directors. They're very, very new, last four, five, even three years. So, you know, this is, this is welcoming you home, Matt. I am so excited. And like councilmember George, I know you to be a man of integrity. I know you to be a very hard worker. I know that you are, you know the secret of leadership. True leadership is leading from behind, not out in front, and empowering those around you. And I am 100% confident that we're making the right choice this evening. And I look forward to a vote when I can officially welcome you to the city. So how about someone make a motion?
Madam mayor, I would be proud to make a motion that the city council, the city of Arroy Grande, approve the negotiated employment agreement with Matthew J. Downing to serve as Arroy Grande city manager following the required oral report under the Brown Act and subject to any minor non-substantive changes necessary for finalization.
Second. Do we need to do these separately?
I would just request the motion maker to confirm that the CEQA exemption is within the recommendation.
Still confirmed.
Perfect.
Second holds?
Second holds.
All right. Any discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnich?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes.
Mayor Ray Russum?
Yes. Welcome home, Matt. Yeah. Thank you, Ben.
Everybody say cheese. Everybody say Arroy Grande.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, Matt, would you like to say a few words? Excuse me. City manager, did we already say that?
Well, mayor, members of council, staff, and community. I'll keep this very brief. I'm very humbled and very honored to be at this incredible opportunity to serve as your city manager. I, as I said in my statement, I've always felt a very deep connection to this community from literally the very first day that I was an intern in Arroy Grande. As your city manager, I'm committed to serving, I'm committed to serving the council, committed to serving the staff, and I'm committed to serving the public for a very long time to come. So thank you very much for this honor, and I look forward to getting to work.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 12B. This is consideration of preliminary approval of community development block grant projects for the year 2024 and finding that this action is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act, state guidelines, section 15061. And hello, Director Pedrati. And, oh, oh, look at that. I didn't even see you sneaking in there, Ninja Perez.
Right here. Brian Pedrati, community development director. Tonight's presentation on the community development block grants will be done by Andrew Perez, our planning manager.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, madam mayor, members of council. I do have a brief presentation that outlines staff's preliminary recommendations for the 2024 CDBG program. I'd like to start with just a little bit of background about the community development block grant program. So CDBG is a federal program that's administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Its primary purpose is to distribute funds to participating cities and counties for a variety of community development needs. Cities range from supporting affordable housing, social services, job creation, and public facility improvements. Really, the main purpose of the CDBG program is to develop viable urban communities. And CDBG funds can be allocated to a variety of project types as long as at least one of the national objectives is met. There are three of those national objectives, one being the project must benefit low and moderate income residents. A project or program can aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, or address urgent community development needs that pose a serious or immediate threat to public health or welfare. The county who administers our CDBG program locally has estimated that approximately $81,889 will be available to the city in 2024. CDBG projects can be, can fall into any one of six categories, those being public services, public facilities, economic development, area benefit, housing rehabilitation, and administration. As a federal program, there are a number of requirements that can dictate how the city can use this funding. To start, a minimum of 70% of each year's allotment must be used for projects or programs that benefit low or moderate income residents. A maximum of 30% of the allocation can go towards projects that propose to eliminate blight. There is a 15% cap for public service projects. And additionally, CDBG projects must be completed in a timely manner and comply with federal environmental laws, labor laws, and procurement regulations. So beginning with the public services category, a maximum of 15% of our allocation, or $12,283, can be allocated towards this category. The city received just a single application for the public services funding, and that came from the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. The coalition requested the entire amount of $12,283 to support its rapid rehousing and homeless prevention program. This program provides a wide array of resources and for folks that are facing homelessness. But essentially, it provides financial assistance to low-income households facing homelessness by quickly identifying and resolving barriers to folks gaining or maintaining housing. So over the past few years, council has consistently directed staff to prioritize allocating public service funding from the CDBG program to projects and programs that support homeless services. Additionally, this request aligns with the county's, the county-wide plan to address homelessness. Therefore, staff is recommending allocating that entire 15% to the request for the Five Cities Homeless Coalition. Moving to the public facilities category, staff is recommending allocating $53,228 to a project that would replace existing curb ramps with ADA-compliant ones. So although the exact location of these curb ramp replacements has not been finalized, the concept is that the CDBG funding will augment the budget for the city's annual street improvements that are as part of the pavement management program. So in discussion with Public Works, Community Development, it was determined that this strategy provides the greatest amount of financial flexibility and most efficient use of the city's both CDBG funding and the funding from the pavement management program, while still meeting the objectives of the CDBG program. With regards to the administration of the program, administration costs are capped at 20% of the overall allocation, or $16,378 for this coming year. Pursuant to the agreement between the city and the county for administrative costs, the city will allocate $10,646 back to the county for running the program. The remaining $5,732 would remain with the city to reimburse staff time for administering those projects. So there are three other funding categories in which no applications were received. So housing rehabilitation, economic development, and area benefit. Therefore, no funding is recommended for either of these categories. In conclusion, this is the staff report, or a table taken from the staff report summarizing the proposed allocations and provides the 2023 allocations for comparison. And so I'll conclude by, outline staff's recommendation. Is recommending that city council provide preliminary approval of the proposed project to be funded with the city's allocation of CDBG funds for the year 2024. And just as a matter of process, staff will come back to city council in the spring for final approval, which will be forwarded to the county for their action plan, planning process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Seacrest, any questions?
No.
Councilmember George? Councilmember Barnich? Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yeah, I'm, have we ever looked at what, what our actual, I guess it would be time commitment is in our administration of this? You know, I think the county does all of the interface with the federal government. What do we actually do to earn our five grand?
So anything from issuing RFP for the contractors who are actually doing the work, monitoring, doing inspections, reporting costs back to the county, just kind of general accounting as well as public works management of the project itself?
Okay. Thank you. Nice question.
I had a similar question. In your, in the past, we have often folded that administrative fee into, to leverage those dollars into other categories. And I thought I heard you say in the, in your presentation that the curb ramp and sidewalk improvement project is going to get folded into a project we're already doing.
That's correct, yeah.
So we would be incurring those administrative costs either way, right?
That's correct.
So I'd like to, I'll save that for comments. So let's go ahead and open up public comment. Would anyone like to comment on item 12B? And seeing no one in chambers, we'll check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Thank you. So we'll close public comment, bring this back to the council. I bet you're all going to figure out what I'm going to say. So perhaps y'all can comment. Mayor Protem?
Um, yeah, I, I was actually going to go that far, but thank you for that. I do think it would maybe be fair to bring it back and have staff look at the actual reporting that we have to do for the county. There is something involved there. I think it's pretty small, but, but I do, I do agree that most of the, what we take as administrative work here is administrative work we would be doing anyway in one form or another. So I think it'd be great if we could fold that back into the, into the curb and, well, I guess it's handicap program that you're looking at there.
Councilmember Barnich?
Thank you. I think that's a great idea. I would agree. I just don't know exactly what's involved at this point, but definitely open to the discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember George?
I was ready to move forward, but I'm happy to hear the discussion.
And councilmember Seacrest?
I think it's a great idea. I'd be willing to hear the discussion.
I don't know that I want to bring this back as, I mean, it's just, we're talking about so little that I, I, let's see if my motion will fly. How's that? I would like to make a motion. Let me scroll to the right spot. That we give preliminary funding recommendations for the city's allocation of 2024 community development block grant funds to, in the amounts of Five Cities Homeless Coalition, $12,283, and the remainder to the curb ramp and sidewalk improvement project.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? I see you.
So just a question for the motion maker in a second. So just to be clear, that, that means that the motion on the floor would remove the money allocated to the city's administration of the CDBG funds?
Correct.
And so the same existing amount would go to the county for their administration?
Correct. We don't have any, we don't have any control about what the county takes their cut, but, so that would be the amount of 5,700, thank you for that, 5,732, rather than in staff, in the staff report being going to city administration, that that be moved to curb ramp and sidewalk or public facilities. Second holds?
Yeah.
All right. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Ray Russum?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Guthrie?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Barnich?
Yes.
All right. Item 12C. Discussion to consider waiving or reimbursing certain building permit fees related to repair or reconstruction of homes damaged by flooding in 2023, declared local emergencies. And I see you, Director Pedrati. Thank you, sir.
Correct. Thank you. Community development director, Brian Pedrati. Let me fire up this. Okay, thank you. Tonight, we have a discussion to consider waiving or reimbursing certain building permit fees related to repair or reconstruction of homes damaged by flooding in 2023, declared local emergencies. So the purpose of the study session is for the city council to consider authorizing the community development director to grant targeted fee reductions or related reimbursements for specific building fees related to the repair or reconstruction of homes damaged by flooding in 2023 during the city's declared local emergencies, and to make findings articulating the public purpose associated with their action. If the council concurs with staff's recommendation, a resolution effectuating that intent would come back on a consent at a future meeting. So for a little bit of background on this, on January 4th, the governor issued a proclamation of a state of emergency relating to severe winter storms in California that began on December 27th, 2022. On January 8th, the President of the United States issued a presidential emergency declaration relating to these same severe storms and basically made residents in impacted counties eligible to apply for federal disaster assistance. On January 9th, the county administrator, county administrative officer for Slow County issued a proclamation of a local emergency. On January 17th, Slow County added to the presidential declaration, sorry, San Luis Obispo County was added to the presidential declaration, meaning that Slow County residents were then eligible. And then January 18th, the Arroy Grande city manager proclaimed the existence of a local emergency and waived demolition permit fees, which we'll get into in a second. There we go. So due to flooding that occurred within the city of Arroy Grande, seven red-tagged properties, seven properties were red-tagged, which means the building official deemed unsafe to occupy due to flooding and or structural damage. In addition, the building official yellow-tagged one property, which identifies damage, but the residence is not deemed unsafe to occupy. Still could be major damage. It's just a difference between occupation. On January 24th, the city council passed Resolution 5259, which confirmed the existence of the local emergency as proclaimed on January 18th, and then waived demolition permit and inspection fees for flooded homes. A demo permit for a home is $377.12, and it was waived for several Tally Ho properties. So specifically to this, there's a subject property that is facilitated tonight's discussion item. On January 23rd, the city approved the demolition of a damaged home at 262 Tally Ho Road. On August 4th, the, the city received an application to reconstruct that single-family home to the apartment. home to the approximate same size as that which was demolished. And then on the 10th, the owner requested a fee waiver via email. City's communication back to the applicant was that fees needed to be paid upfront, and staff was not authorized to waive or reduce fees. Subsequently, the discussion evolved after hearing from some community stakeholders and after further research on other local communities' response to the fee waiver request, and staff determined that a discussion at the city council was warranted. Just going into the email from Jen Kaplan regarding that one house, it was a request for a waiver or reduction of building permit fees for reconstruction, requested it due to the financial hardship of the January 2023 storm, and the residence had to be demolished, and they moved out of their home. Building plan review and inspection costs were $13,551.24. And again, on, in November, the Kaplans paid the full fees for those building permits. There are also two other residences that suffered significant damage, and they also have the potential to have similar rebuilt costs within that, that area of Tally, Tally Ho homes. Again, this is just the subject property that sort of spurred the discussion tonight. So after evaluating all available options, staff determined that we were unable to reduce or waive the fees for the Kaplan building permit, as the Arroy Grande municipal code does not specifically authorize any city staff to grant an administrative fee waiver for building permits. Staff also investigated whether a portion of the city's FEMA funding could be used to offset building permit fees, but federal regulations prohibit the city from using that funding for projects located on private property. Staff determined that the city council does have the authority to grant fee waivers for building permits. And as stated earlier, the city council previously approved Resolution 5259 to waive demo permit and inspection fees for residences who experienced flooding resulting from the January 9th storm event. And the city council has the authority to similarly waive the fees for other building permit fees by resolution. So these are some of the potential city costs associated with building permit waivers. Again, two potential additional residences had significant flood damage. The total cost of replacement of those is likely in the 13,550 range, just kind of took it as the range from the house that has already applied for building permits. And so several other residences had minor flood damage as well, so they required demo permits, including removal of insulation and drywall and replacement. Those demo permits, fees were waived with that Resolution 5259. There were, I think, five, I think we've identified five that had those demo permit waivers. And again, those, those demo waivers were intended to expedite and allow for a quick response and limit water damages at the time, is why they came in so quickly after, after the storm came through. There are other local jurisdictions that have had a mix of responses and approach to the, the storm event. Morro Bay, on August 22nd, they approved a resolution temporarily reducing building and planning permit fees by 50% for storm damaged residences. This was approved through the end of 2023. And as part of that, the resolution stated that owners must demonstrate other sources of recovery funding, FEMA insurance were insufficient to cover those costs. San Luis Obispo County used an already established administrative fee waiver process that was in their fee schedule to waive up to $5,000 each for residents that were damaged. And Morro Bay did have, we, we talked with Morro Bay staff, they did have 16 residences that were, that requested funding. They do know that some others did do, do the recovery and repair without requesting waivers, so the damage was probably greater than the 16 that, that actually came in for requesting the, the waiver, the fee reduction waiver. So waiver or reimbursement of building permit fees for those homes damaged in 2023 and the associated flooding must be supported by a public purpose. Staff identifies two public purposes supported by this fee waiver. One is to maintain the housing availability and stock in times of emergency. The other is to restore blighted neighborhoods by reducing barriers to construction or repair of storm damaged homes. So California currently suffers from housing shortages and flooding of homes, which reduces the available housing stock. So authorizing these reductions in fee waivers could help facilitate individuals to return to their homes from which were there displaced during flooding events, thereby returning rentals to market. The city must support their waiver reimbursement decisions based on those who experienced more significant damage. The, the staff has included in their recommendation some constraints and requirements. Some of these are based on just how the houses were tagged and as well as the resolution from Morro Bay. So one constraint would be to limit the fee reduction to 50% of building permit fees. One would be to really look at the class of homes that were damaged by the storms in terms of class, talking about the range. So really, we're talking about red or yellow tagged homes that were impacted by the storms of 2023 as part of the local declared emergency. And that would limit it to essentially eight homes. There were seven red tagged and one yellow tagged. Staff would suggest a 90-day time limit in order to come in and request a permit for any type of reconstruction work. Proof of homeownership, an acknowledgement that the city makes no representation on how the fee waiver may impact insurance or other recovery payments and waiving of all potential claims. And then other sources of recovery taken together are insufficient to cover the costs. It's not transferable to any other property owner, and then the city manager may impose additional conditions as necessary. So staff's alternatives include adopting findings for the 50% waiver for fees for homes red tagged or yellow tagged due to the 2023 flooding, including staff's recommendation on the underlying public purpose and SEQA, and authorize the city manager to take all necessary actions or provide other direction to staff. And staff has recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to take all actions necessary to approve waivers for 50% of the total amount of demolition, building permit, and inspection fees for homes that were red or yellow tagged and thus damaged due to flooding occurring in 2023 during the city's locally declared emergencies. Find the public purpose contained within the staff report supports the contemplated waivers, and then determine that the discussion item is not a project subject to SEQA because it has no potential to result in either a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Let's check and see if there are questions from council. Councilmember Barnage?
Just a question about the 90 days. Is, I'm curious how staff chose that timeline. I feel like 90 days from when, if this comes back, people might not really, I mean, they're probably not even sure they're going to rebuild, but of course, we'd like them to rebuild. I mean, I, I feel like it could take six months to decide. I mean, a building permit, they have to have plans, they have to have, they have to meet with everybody, so I feel like it takes, it'll take longer. So was there a reason, I, I, maybe we kind of want to foresee what we would be putting out there as far as the fees being waived, but would staff be amenable to extending that? I think 90 days is maybe short.
I think so. We talked about 60 days, oh, sorry, 90 days, six months. I think the feeling, the feeling on staff initially was that six months may be too long, but I, I think we're open to kind of any time limit there.
Okay.
Yeah, the 90 days is a time period where someone can come in and request the fee waiver.
Okay, so they, so it's not the...
They don't necessarily have to have their plans and, and everything ready to go, but they have to officially request that fee waiver during that 90-day period. And the other reason that we chose the 90 days is because we're getting into 2024, we're moving out of 2023, and this, the, the storm occurred early in 2023, as everyone knows, so we're trying to move forward, get this, this area buttoned up, but still allow people to make a decision to even request the fee waiver, but move forward after that with plans, et cetera, if they, if they'd like to.
Okay, so if they came in within 90 days and were granted a fee waiver, how soon do they have to use their fee waiver?
That's a good question. Normally, when someone comes in with plans, you have about a year to, to keep, continue to make progress. So we would, we would be open to kind of that year timeframe. If they came in, requested the fee reduction or whatever the council lands on, we'd give them, you know, approximately 12 months to make that decision to come in with the plans, et cetera.
Okay, so Isaac, we should probably put that in writing or in some sort of the document if we're going to go ahead with that, if we decide.
Yeah, I think to the extent there's a motion and direction tonight, as, as you mentioned, councilmember Barnage, different than when the resolution came back, I think any direction tonight, including to the point interim city manager Robison made about sort of what we do generally for one year, if that's of interest to the council, that could be baked into the, the resolution that would come back on consent.
Okay, thank you for that.
Councilmember George, any questions?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. The, the Morro Bay 16 fee waivers that they accumulated, do we have a dollar value for that?
We don't have a dollar value for that.
It's, it's my understanding, if I'm correct, that the homes in Morro Bay and the decision to give the fee reductions, because those were mobile homes and there were, there was possible threat of, of families being unhoused, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Many of them were, yes, mobile homes.
Okay. Do we have any language that we can consider? Is there a need, I guess the need would be a bigger question, to cap the waiver at a certain amount? Like, is there a potential for that 50% to exceed the 13.5 that we're talking about?
The question was whether or not the, the permit fee could go above 13,000?
Whether, whether or not there's a need to cap that, that 50, so like 50% up to a certain dollar value?
Sure, we, there's, there, we can add wording that, that caps hit at 7,500 or somewhere around that number. The 50% is, from our purposes, is calculated off about a, a $13,500 figure, so, and that's pretty analogous to the other homes that we're looking at, the other two homes potentially. One note is, we haven't had any requests from anyone else to do a rebuild yet, but this might spur them to, to do that. So we're going to be notifying those folks directly, depending on the results of the council's decision.
And I apologize, I didn't ask this question earlier. City manager may impose additional conditions as needed. I feel that that wording just opens up this fee waiver to a lot of conditions that we may not be even considering. So do we have any idea of, like, what are some circumstances where that, that sentence or that line in, would, would apply?
I think I can take a shot at that, Councilmember George. I think generally, we'd be looking, that sort of catch-all language for this types of standards, conditions, conditions of approval that community development in consultation with the city manager may ultimately add from the fee waiver onto the ultimate entitlements that may need to be issued for the, for the house. So it's meant to be inclusive of sort of the types of conditions where there's a nexus between the development that's contemplated. So after the fee waiver, it would just allow staff to add conditions associated with the underlying entitlements once it came forward.
Can you give an example? Because I...
Sure. So I think a, a good example that came up just over the course of questioning is if there was express direction from the council for sort of a year-long period by which the fee waiver was good before it was lost, then the, the condition of approval when they came in for plans may be that it's over that time period or extended six months if there's difficulty in, in securing financing or doing something like that. So I think the, the purpose of that language was just to provide a degree of flexibility following the issuance of the fee waiver, but attached to the entitlements that would follow from, from the rebuild.
Okay, thank you. Those are my only questions.
All right, Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes, I was wondering in particular about the section regarding waivers that the recipients must sign. And I just want to clarify, it's item E. So, quote, additionally, property owners receiving a fee waiver or reimbursement must waive all potential claims by themselves or any third party against the city of Arroy Grande based on insurance payments or federal disaster relief program payments to the same address. Of course, that makes sense. But I had a constituent actually ask me, are people waiving, taking action against the city for some responsibility for like the condition of the creek or something? And I, that had not occurred to me, but that seems like that would be something we don't want. So I don't know what you think of that.
Yeah, I would, I think, Councilmember Seacrest, the, the idea is that the city couldn't make sort of representations with respect to other types of disaster relief that the private property owner may receive. So I think there could be a way certainly to draft language to just make clear that the, the required waiver associated with the fee waiver is going to be limited to sort of the city's waiver of the fees. I just said waiver several times in a row, but the, the idea is that what we would ask the, or what the city would ask the private properties to waive is any claims against the city related to any other forms of disaster relief or, or other avenues by which they may incur assistance associated with the, the damage from the storm events. And I think based on, you know, once council deliberates and takes motion, if, if there was a concern to have that language sort of specific, that could be within the, the resolution that comes back on consent, to just make sure it's targeted to a waiver associated with the city sort of generously offering money off what would otherwise be applicable in terms of the fees to develop.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I got to get clarification again, it's a lot of words.
Yeah.
I think if I could sum up what you're saying...
Please, yep.
If I'm hearing you right, is that they're not going to come back and say, sue us because it wasn't a fair amount, or, or some other reason that they think they should get more off, or have that applied to some other fee?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And, sorry, Mayor, one clarification on top of that, it would also mean that the city wasn't responsible, or they couldn't utilize evidence of the city offering a fee waiver to then try to make representations about the city's position when they saw other funding, you know, through other avenues. So it's meant to just ensure this is a targeted city-specific fee waiver, and as a result, it's, you know, that's the extent of the city's representation, that, you know, they've met our intent, but that the city isn't making representations that can be used more broadly.
Mayor Pro Tem Guthrie?
So you mentioned that there, that we, I think it said we had seven demolition permits that were issued in... that were issued in, and so I'm wondering whether it was seven or whatever, whether more than one of those demolition permits has, we've heard the one houses has been demoed. Have any of the other houses actually been demoed?
No, just the one.
And you say there's three that potentially could be with demolition permits that they, it was demolition the whole house, or demolition specifically about the damaged areas, or?
The demo permit fee is regardless of the demo. So the, yeah, the demo of the whole house was the same cost, permit cost as just removing drywall and insulation and replacing.
Okay. And then I know in the staff report, it said there was substantially the same home that was proposed to be replaced. I think I was told that the, the home that they're, they're building is going to be 2,000 square foot, was, was the, the original home also 2,000 square feet?
It was a half a square foot off. It was almost identical.
Exactly the same size. And is there any consideration for, for if there is a substantial difference in, 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 in the home? This, I mean, if I was, if I had an 800 square foot home and I was going to build a new one, I wouldn't build an 800 square foot home. I'd, I'd go larger. So is there, is there a consideration of, of that in our, in our determination here at all? And can there be?
There could be. I, I don't believe there is based on just the constraints that we laid out, but that could certainly be another limitation or parameter.
Okay. Okay, yeah, those, those were my only questions. Thank you.
I have one question that I already know the answer to, but just for public consumption. Why is staff not recommending 100%?
Staff looked at sort of the other jurisdictions, and one of the, I guess, maybe the, the short answer is that when the request came in for one of the homes, it included a, a link to the Morro Bay 50% reduction. Staff felt that that was reasonable in terms of, you know, allowing a, a fee reduction, but also recognizing that there's still staff work and tasks that are involved with permit issuance and inspection fees and things like that.
Yeah, I was expecting a slightly different answer. Bill, do you want to piggyback that?
I hope it's-
I'm in teacher mode. It's finals week, so, you know.
Well, I mean, we, we are trying to limit the amount of cost that we were going to incur. So that's, that's really the main driver behind cutting the fees in half or reduction versus, you know, full waiver.
And we also have consultants that we pay as part of this. So we don't get to waive their fees.
That's right.
That's the answer I was expecting.
That's right. Thank you for going. So it is a cost issue for us. We do not have in-house inspectors and plant checkers. We do use a building inspection and plant check service. So those costs are directly paid from the building permits and building permit fees. And so we're trying to limit that, that spending as well.
Thank you. And I, I think I heard you say it earlier, but I just want to verify, this is such a limited group of people. We're going to be doing direct outreach to them, letting them know if the city council does take this action, anybody who qualifies will, will know right away.
Yes, that's correct. Director Pedradie and I have been talking about that a lot, and we are going to make sure that we directly notify all of these people that can qualify for this type of waiver or reduction.
And again, I'm answering, asking a question I already know the answer to, but this is to our city attorney. My biggest concern in bringing this forward, and I shared with the Kaplins, and they were, they were quite gracious, was making sure that we're not setting a precedent for, and that this is very, very specific to a specific event and point in time. How are we ensuring that we don't create a condition where there's another act of God or natural disaster, and then there's a precedent set?
It's a good question, and I do think ultimately, it's a, it's a policy consideration. This is about a specific set of storm events for which the council ratified two local emergencies last year associated with the storm events and the flooding. And the recommendation tonight has been tailored to be very targeted to the class of homeowners that were impacted either with, as Director Pedradie mentioned, either with their home red-tagged or yellow-tagged. And so the purpose is try to effectuate the, the public purpose of keeping neighborhoods intact and, and these, these class of residents in their homes. But it's, it's purposefully narrow, because it is, as, as interim city manager Robison mentioned, it is a reduction in the fees that the city would otherwise be allowed to collect.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
Yes. So the seven homes that were red-tagged, I, I'm understanding, I think correctly, so, well, maybe not if they had the demolition permit, but how many are back in their homes of those seven?
That I don't know specifically if they actually have.
Well, I guess, so the red tags have been lifted, or I, I just, I guess I'm trying to determine as far as those residents taking up, occupying other rentals, how many are still sort of displaced. But would it have to do with if the red tags un-red tagged or something, or could they move back in as soon as the red tag was removed?
Yes.
As long, okay.
Yes.
Okay. And so, okay, so we're not-
Yeah.
Go ahead, Brian.
I don't believe there are any red tags left on any of the homes.
Okay.
So.
And then the only ones that were sort of a complete loss, I think, is what you're saying, that's the potential to come rebuild, are three homes.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Including the one-
Right.
The Kaplan's.
Right, okay, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just, just to clarify that. So there are three homes that the red tags have not been lifted because they're unoccupiable. Are the people living in these homes that they may now decide to demo? You understand, it seems like there has to be three homes, if there's three homes that are potentially going to be torn down, that those three homes are not being occupied right now?
That's possible. The one, obviously, the Kaplan's has been demoed. It is gone. There are two homes that we've not heard from the, we have not heard from the homeowners about whether they want to do any reconstruction permits at this point.
But if, if they had the red tags lifted, it just seems unlikely that they would be doing, then doing a reconstruction. But I, I guess that's, that's possible under our scenario.
It is possible.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. The second question I just hit, so, so following up on those, on, on our precedent setting, so we have a declared emergency sometime in the future, let's even make it a flooding event. It's some other area that floods, and 25 homes are damaged. Have we set a precedent that, that because we declared a local emergency, that we're going to, going to follow through on this?
Well, I think it would, I mean, there's some policy precedent, absolutely. I don't think there's a legal precedent associated with the decision to waive the fees, and the, and the process would be the same. And in reviewing the council's direction from that first local emergency in 2023, and as Director Pedradie mentioned, there was a waiver at that time for demolition per, permit, so it was a little more targeted. But yeah, I would say a policy precedent perhaps, but the city council would have to move through the same process before it could take action to waive fees otherwise applicable in the future for a class of, of residents.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Seacrest?
So that Mayor Protem's question elicited an answer for part of what I was going to ask, but is, and I apologize for not asking this earlier, but is it correct that some municipalities have in-house inspection? So in other words, they're, when they, they can waive a fee, but they're, they're not having to pay consultants the way we are?
Yes, absolutely.
Is Morro Bay one of those municipalities?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know if they are.
I just think a lot of people aren't aware, when they ask for something like this, what, what we're actually talking about in terms of there are services that we have to pay for. So, thank you.
There's employees we have to pay for too. But yeah, that's where I was going with that, that leading question that, yeah. Okay, any other follow-ups? All right, then we'll open up public comment. Would anyone like to come forward on item 12C? And seeing no one in chambers, we'll check in with the city clerk.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
All right, we'll close public comment, bring this back to the council. And I do think there's probably going to be some discussion about the specifics. So Councilmember Seacrest, considering this is your district, why don't you kick us off?
Thank you. And I'm, I'm really glad that, you know, well, first of all, I very much appreciate all the work that staff and everyone put into this. And I am really excited that we are able to do something for these folks. It's obviously been a horrendous situation. I, I appreciate the discussion about specifics and how well the staff drilled down into the pinpoint, to pinpoint the constraints and requirements. And I, I think what we're, we're certainly saying here is, in this moment in time, with this circumstance, we are able to help in this way. We are not saying that we can always do this by any means, and, you know, goodness help us, that we won't have other situations like this, but we could. So we're, we're very specific about, we're able to help these folks in this way now. And I just appreciate it, and I think, of course, they're going to be very thankful. Thank you.
Councilmember George?
Thank you. I don't know why I was shocked that I was going next. Thank you, staff, for putting this together. I, I do caution the, the comparison with another city when the circumstances are a little bit different. That does, you know, the class of house and class is really the only word I can use, because the type, the 2,000 square foot house that's coming up is not going to be the same as a mobile home that's getting repaired. It's, it's just, it's not the same. And whether or not that city has an in-house inspector, which I understand that, that we pay that salary, but that salary's paid no matter what, versus us putting out money to pay, and here we are trying to be very good stewards of the, all of our residents' money. It's, it's not our money. We're, we're giving our residents' money to specific residents, and sometimes that's called for. I just, I just caution us looking at other cities and not comparing apples to apples when we're making a presentation like this. That being said, I, I support helping. I, it, when you lose your home, it's, it's tragic. And there are, I'm sure, many things in that, those homes that were lost that can never be replaced, no matter how much money. And that feeling is terrible. And if they can feel even just a little bit better knowing that, that we, we recognize that, we honor that, and we try to help them, I would support that. I don't know if I would support just a flat 50%, which is what I was leading up to with my question. I would like to cap that. I like how the county had it capped at 5,000. So I would like to see a cap. I'm open for discussion, but I wouldn't want to go any higher than 6,500. That would be my max. But those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnich?
Thank you. I, I'm in agreement with most of what has been said. I am ready to move forward with staff's recommendation. I, I can be persuaded on the moving off of the 50% to a max. I think that makes it a little bit more clean and black and white. I, I'm not comparing us to other cities, really. When I first considered this, I was just literally looking at what had happened on Tally Ho, and those people were taking up residence someplace else. And, and then that just makes our housing stock a little bit smaller, albeit a little bit smaller. And then when you drive down Tally Ho, it would really would be a shame if, for some reason, I, probably not just this small amount, 6,500 or so, that it took them longer to rebuild, but the costs do add up. And so I do appreciate this was a huge, there was a, I mean, this was, this was obviously probably the biggest natural disaster I think we've had in the history of the city. And I don't think it's precedent-setting, because I think every time something like this happens, it takes a lot to bring it forward. It's a different council, they deliberate, there's all different discussions that go into it. Maybe the city has a lot less money to be able to do this. Maybe we have consultants that are a lot more money. I'm not sure. But I feel like every, every time, if this were to come forward again, that there's all kinds of things to, to discuss. And I don't think we pull back and say, well, we did it then, so we have to do it now. It's always going to be different. So I'm ready to move forward and I'm, but I'm open to that, the 50%. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Could, could you put back up the findings, the two findings you had up there? Just, so are we going to include one or both of these findings in our actual ordinance? Okay, I, I can't support the first finding here, the maintain housing availability and stocks in times of emergency. I just, I just think that's a, a real stretch of, of what's going, going on here. These homes are likely to be, they're, they're not going to be rebuilt based on us providing, you know, a, a little bit of financial. The restored, divided neighborhoods, frankly, is a stretch for me still, but, but I can support that. So in the, in the ordinance, I would hope it only had the second, the, the, the second finding there. I do actually want to comment on the, the difference about, yes, we have to pay staff no matter what, but we could redirect their time. For example, we redirected significant amounts of staff time to go down and help deal with that emergency, including bringing in the trash thing. So it is different than the hard cost, at least to me. It's different than the hard, hard cost of, of actually sending it out. We, staff's time would certainly be taken away from something else that was important, but, but the redirection of staff time, to me anyways, is different than a hard cost. I can support the $6,500 cap. I think, I think that puts us in a, in a pretty good position there. It does occur to me that the Morro Bay 50% may have been significantly lower than $13,000. I would like to see something in there that says it's substantially the same home, if, you know, if, if, because some significant amount of the, well, if we're capping it, I guess I don't have to worry about that. So I think the 90 days to request it is reasonable. And I think the, at least the logic for me would be, we want, we want to deal with these all in a row. You know, we don't want, there's a, there's a certain amount of work that goes into verifying it. So we don't want them showing up in November of next year and saying, oh, I want the fee, and how did we do that? You know, so I, I, I support the 90 days. Those are my comments.
Thank you. So I first just want to recognize the Kaplins, who came forward and were quite in their dealings with the, the emails that I exchanged with the Kaplins. Very considerate and kind and appreciative that the question was even going to be, to be weighed. They said anything would be appreciated. And, you know, it was very, it, it wasn't as difficult as it could have been when people are under that level of stress. So I just want to recognize that, that that family was, was relatively easy to deal with, all things considered. The 90 days is fine. I was more at the county level of 5,000. The county's got way more resources than we do, and they capped it at 5,000. And I think that that cap serves a couple functions. One of them is, as you said, I had the same concern, that building something substantially different would, I don't think you should get anything. But that kind of negates that concern. And then secondly, going forward, in terms of a precedent, without a doubt, as you said, it may not be a legal precedent, but guaranteed, a couple years from now, if we have another act of God like this, somebody's going to come forward and say, I get 50%, because that's what you guys did. And this is saying, I get 5,000, which is a different conversation, because it's not proportional to any change in fee, in a, to any changes in fees that might be coming in the future. I don't know if I said that very well, but I hope that you understood it. What I'm saying is it, it, it gives less of a, of a risk to future councils of, of what that precedent actually is doing. So I, I would definitely want to limit, my suggestion would be 5,000. I think we probably need to go back around the horn and have that conversation, since there's at least a majority that's willing to limit. So perhaps, I just want to make sure that's all my comments before we do that. On that first finding, I, the, it's funny, I didn't think about striking it, Mayor Protem, but as I look at it and really think about it, it's not maintaining availability in times of emergency, because it is a time of emergency and it's not available. So it's maintaining housing availability, that's great, but not in times of emergency. This is actually not available during- This is actually not available during a time of emergency. So I would support striking that as a finding. But the second one I can live with, certainly. And my only other concern in doing this, even though I'm willing to do a limited granting of this, is to recognize that it's not the biggest disaster. We had a disaster that took out eight of 16 bridges back in 1908. But I think it was eight.
Big fire, too.
Yeah. But these things do happen, but I, I have my own belief that we're going to see more of this in the coming years. And that is my concern about precedent and about what our citizens may expect of us in practice and in policy going forward. So I have some concerns about that. So Councilmember Seacrest, can I come back around to you? Because you were willing to go with staff's recommendation, but then the majority went a different way. Where are you at with that?
Sorry, I was willing to go, yes, no, that's fine. So I would support moving forward. I'm fine striking the number one finding. I understand what you're saying. The 90-day limit appeals to me for the same reason that Mayor Protem stated, and that was kind of my thought when that discussion was going on. It seems like we want to contain this as much as possible, and we do not want other, God forbid, other events to happen, but then somebody coming back and saying, well, okay, now I'm going to do this. And I feel like they have had a year to think about this. And it doesn't sound like they need to complete the project or anything like that in order to apply. So I would support 90 days. I would support the $5,000 cap. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember George?
I would support the $5,000 cap. I was, I set 6,500 for fear that I might be the Lone Ranger. So I absolutely would support $5,000 and support striking that first line of findings.
Okay. Councilmember Barnich? Oh, excuse me. Oh.
Ditto on the
Good thing your mic was off.
So yes, so yes, on the, God, I lost my train of thought. Okay, so yes, 5,000. And striking the first finding, the 90 days I'm okay with. My fear was that they come in, they get the fee waiver, and then they don't, you know, it takes so long to do everything when you're doing reconstruction. So I just want to make sure that when they come back in 12 and a half months, they say, oh, you know, we say sorry, you know, you took too long, and now the fee waiver no longer applies. So is it in perpetuity? Or is there a time limit? Should we put one? I just want to make sure it's, there's, it's kind of locked up, but not too locked up, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think we will add that 12-month time period.
Okay.
That flexible condition also allows the city manager to place conditions, just in case there's some type of extenuating circumstance on their ability to reconstruct.
Okay, good. So you've heard my concern, so, right, I appreciate that other requirement. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
And Mayor Protem?
Okay, so I'm fine with $5,000. Oh, yeah, right. And the 90 day, and I think those were the only changes.
Okay. So in, in this one, we are, you said you were going to be bringing it back, so I'm unclear as to what we're doing.
Give me the direction.
So I think the recommendation sort of sums up what would be helpful for the city in that we will bring a resolution back on consent that incorporates the council's direction. So we would just be looking for sort of adoption of those fraud parameters with the change associated with the $5,000 cap and some of the other items of direction provided tonight. And then it would come back on a future agenda for formal action via resolution.
So you do not need anything from us at this point? Staff, do you have as much direction?
Oh, no, sorry. Yes, I would, would like a motion, Mayor. But I think it could
The way it's worded here, I don't think it's right.
Sure. I think if the motion, if a council member is so inclined, would be to authorize the city manager to prepare the resolution in line with tonight's direction, including the second public purpose finding, supporting the action, find the action exempt from CEQA as listed in the staff report, and bring
And the cap.
And a $5,000 cap, and bring that direction forward as a resolution on consent.
Second. Sorry. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Did we mention striking the first line?
Yes.
In the motion? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnich?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Mayor Vay Rassam?
Yes.
All right, moving right along. Item 12D. This is a review and approve council appointments to regional and local boards and committees. And this is our city clerk, Ms. Mattson.
We can appoint her while she's gone.
Right? Oh, yeah, Barnich can do rack? That sounds great. We are ready.
Do you want to proceed with that?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's that time of year where we'll review the current appointments to the regional and local boards and committees and make appointments for the next one-year period. As you know, appointments are typically done following an election. However, a few changes have occurred since the appointments in 2022. In addition to the administrative changes that were listed in the staff report, the following substantive changes have occurred. The Mayor Protem was added as an alternate for the Central Coast Blue Regional Recycled Water Authority Board. Meeting dates were also updated for the Central Coast Community Energy, or 3CE, Policy Board. And Councilmember Gaffrey was appointed as the primary representative to that board at the last meeting. The Five Cities Fire Authority Board, there was changes made to that, include, to add two appointees to that board as a result of the new GPA. We also removed the Aurora Grande Business Meeting due to the South County Chambers of Commerce changing their meeting format to a Rise and Shine format. And also, we reorganized the T-Bid, so changes were made based on the meeting schedule that was adopted by the board. Okay, so a couple items for council's consideration when you're reviewing this list tonight. The Central Coast Community Energy Policy Board. Staff was made aware shortly after we let them know of our appointment of, Mayor Protem got 32 to the board, that the term is actually January 1st to December 31st, instead of what we have in, currently have in our MOU with the cities of Grover Beach, Aurora Grande and Pismo Beach, which is December 1st through November 30th. So it's something to consider there as far as directing staff to amend the MOU if that's necessary with 3CE. Secondly, the T-Bid is the only city advisory board that is listed on our local appointments list, and that's inconsistent with our practice with the other advisory boards, such as Planning Commission, ARC, and so on. For this board, the appointed council member is not a voting member, so they just report back to council, as you know. So just recommending a change of removing that from the list. Let's see. Yep. So recommended updates to our list would be to update the policy board term from January 1st to December 31st. Direct staff to work with 3CE on a revised MOU if necessary, and remove the T-Bid Advisory Board from the list of appointments to boards and committees to be consistent with other city advisory practices. And here's the alternatives that are laid out in the staff report, the first being to reappoint all council members to the current boards and committees, and update the list of appointments, or do reassignments to the boards or direct staff differently. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if there are questions. Councilmember George, do you have any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Seacrest?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Barnich?
No questions. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I also have no questions.
I have one to bring to all y'all's attention. I suppose it's a question, you know, it's not a question, it's for discussion, so I'll hold off. Let's go ahead and open up public comment. And seeing nobody jump up here, let's check in online.
If any members of the public on Zoom would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. There are no raised hands.
Okay, so we'll close public comment. For, the thing I wanted to bring up is that Zone 3 has changed its meeting time. And while I'm happy to sit there as the alternate, that will not be generally one I can make. If it's during my vacations, I can. But if somebody has a burning desire to be the alternate, that's fine. I'm just letting Councilmember Barnich know that there's probably not backup there unless it's summertime.
May I ask what the time is?
It's 10:30 a.m. It used to be 6 p.m.
On what day?
Third Thursday of odd-numbered months.
It's always on Thursdays.
Thank you.
And just whoever is interested in being the alternate, I think that I've made almost every meeting, that's one I can typically meet, make, because I have them ahead of time. And also, it's 10:30 in the morning, and generally, the meeting's a half hour or 45 minutes at the most, so.
Can you, and there's, is there a Zoom component? I don't recall that there was when I was there for you last time.
No, you, you can, I have participated, no, I haven't participated remotely. I have listened in remotely, but you can't vote if you're, so I've taken notes. I think there was a time when no one else could go, and I did attend the meeting remotely and just listened and took notes, but I couldn't vote. That's, that's the way it is for Zone 3. And I don't know why, because a lot of other, that's one of the ones that don't let, don't let you or don't have that option.
I would be happy to be the alternate on that.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a, Thursday morning isn't either.
It's actually a really important advisory board.
Yeah.
So
And it's not stressful anymore because we have water for a while.
That, and we have a new contract, too. That was pretty stressful when the contract was being renegotiated.
It's like well-oiled machine, and we have the staff, Shane Taylor, famous Shane Taylor, you know.
Local celebrity.
All right. Then would anyone like to make a motion? Jessica, can you put the list of things that were, that you had up there before?
So, so these are the alternatives. So this would be the motion here. So it looks like we would want to do number two if we're reassigning and adding Councilmember Seacrest as an alternate to Zone 3.
Aren't we also talking about eliminating one of them? I don't see it on that list, but.
Yeah, I can put that one.
Yeah, that slide had the actual changes on it. This one, yeah.
Okay, and so no one, everyone, everyone's good where they are? Is that what, okay. Yeah, I am too. I am, so, okay.
And everybody's good with removing the T-Bid Advisory Board? Now that we've got it appointed properly or more constructively?
Amazing.
Okay, good. All right, would someone like to make a motion then? I guess I will, since it's me making a change, unless you want to. Okay. Then I will move that we update the 3CE Policy Board term to January 1st to December 31st. I'm just going to skip number two because who cares? And number three, I don't want to give staff more work to do, it's just not important. Remove T-Bid Advisory Board from the list of appointments to boards and committees to be consistent with other city advisory bodies, and that we replace myself as the alternate on Zone 3 Water Advisory Board with Councilmember Seacrest.
Second.
Any discussion? All right. This can be a voice vote, right? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. This takes us to item 10A, which is the one that has been reorganized due to conflict. And I don't have my statement from you sitting right in front of me, but I hope that it suffices to say that the, the item in front of us is, sorry, I gotta go backwards, several pages. The consideration of CUP 23002, AG Creek Stream Gauge Fish Passage Improvement, et cetera. And both myself, well, I'll just recuse for myself. I live within 500 feet of this project, so I will be recusing myself per the FPPC guidelines and the guidelines of Isaac Rosen.
And thank you for that, Mayor. I also live within 500 feet of the project, and so I will be recusing myself from this agenda item as well.
So if you could just give us a moment to get out of the chambers, and we'll turn it over to you. And just because I'm not going to get the, hi, Patrick. Just because I'm not going to get the chance, if you're all still watching this at home, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We don't have another one of these until after, until 2024 begins. So to staff and to our people watching, to the people in the audience, to our faithful that come every week, happy holidays to everyone from my family to yours. Come by my house, we got some crazy lights going on. So, yeah, we'll see you soon. Okay?
Started on Thanksgiving Day. Yeah, it's a record. I told him you should do that every year. I'll just, I'll just move to her chair. Unless it's not broken, I'll be able to sit. I want to know who else moves that thing?
It must be another short person.
All right. So with that, we will move on to item, or back to item 10, I believe it's 10A. So we'll move back to item 10A, consideration of CUP 23002, AG Creek Stream Gauge Fish Passage Improvement, and requested fee waiver, finding action exempt under CEQA pursuant to state guidelines. Thanks.
Thank you. Just really quickly, Brian Bajadi, Community Development Director. Tonight, Patrick Holub, our associate planner, will give the presentation on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Members of the council, appreciate the opportunity tonight to talk with you about a project that I think has big potential for the health of our creek system in the city and for federally endangered fish species. So just a little bit of background on the stream gauge itself. The stream gauge was originally installed by the U.S. Geological Survey in the 1940s to monitor the flows of Aurora Grande Creek. Since the stream gauge was installed, downcutting and erosion in the stream has created a greater fish passage barrier. So the, the sand at the bottom of the creek has eroded, and the concrete has stayed in place, and so the jump that the fish have to make has increased in height over time. And so recognizing that as a significant barrier to the ability of Steelhead to traverse the Aurora Grande Creek, 2008 Slow County Board of Supervisors approved an MOU with what at the time was called the Creek, I'm sorry, the Central Coast Salmon Enhancement. And that was to improve the stream gauge with the goal of improving fish passage. And so funding for this project has been obtained through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, as well as California Department of Fish and Wildlife. In 2018, the group formerly known as Central Coast Salmon Enhancement rebranded and is now known as Creeklands Conservation. So I'll be referring to that group as Creeklands Conservation for the rest of the presentation here. And I did want to highlight just briefly that this project has previously been reviewed by both the Planning Commission and the City Council in 2015. At that time, the City Council approved a fee waiver, and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project. At that time, the City Council approved a fee waiver and the Planning Commission recommended approval of the project. However, there was a shortfall in terms of funding for the project. And so CDFW ultimately canceled the contract they had with Creeklands Conservation. And so the project then expired in 2017. So based on that, they were required to reapply, and so that's why we're here today. This particular iteration of the project was reviewed by the Staff Advisory Committee in October. There was a number of topics that were discussed, including those on the screen, but ultimately each of those points ended up with a corresponding condition of approval that you'll find in the draft resolution tonight. Subsequently, the Planning Commission reviewed this project on November 7th and specifically discussed topics such as the required stream diversion, pre versus post creek volumes, and also the timeline for the proposed street closure. I'm sorry, partial street closure. And so I wanted to also highlight some of the permit requirements involved with this project. So specifically, Rojo Grande Municipal Code Section 1644050 requires that creeks remain in their natural state unless approved by the City Council in conjunction with an application for a CUP. And so in this particular scenario, the Planning Commission, who typically would approve a CUP, actually acts as the advisory body here to the City Council and has made a recommendation for approval. In addition to the city's permitting requirements, the applicants also responded, responsible for obtaining approvals from the necessary state agencies such as the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and then the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board prior to commencing construction. In addition to that, Creeklands Conservation is also seeking a fee waiver for this project to assist with funding for completion of the construction. I'll go into a little bit more of that later in my presentation. So the fee waiver requested is for an amount of $6,388. And as you'll see in the staff report, staff is supportive of that request because of the numerous community benefits that the organization Creeklands Conservation provides, but also in particular with this project, the fact that it implements a couple of different general plan policies which act to enhance the natural creek function, and also the fact that the health of the city's creek network is beneficial to the public in general. Furthermore, the, the increase in available habitat for a federally endangered species also is beneficial to the public as well. So I've got a couple of pictures here that I'd like to highlight and show you what we're looking at. This is an area that's about 35 feet below Myrtle Street. And so it's somewhere that most people probably haven't ever been. So what you'll see here is on the top right here, you've got a fenced-in structure. This is where the stream gauge in the tower is. And then you can see here, this is the actual weir that I've been discussing. And this is the fish passage barrier that, that they're facing here to basically jump over this small waterfall here is the challenge that they're facing. So from another angle, you can see the tower structure a little bit better. You can see the bridge from the tower out to Myrtle Street. So again, that's about 35 feet above the weir here. And I will say that the winter storms that we had did quite a bit of damage on this particular site. These pictures were taken before the storms in January and the, the high floodwaters actually did quite a bit of damage to the concrete structure here and ripped out the fencing that was here. But the county applied for an emergency permit with the city to reconstruct the stream gauge to its previous condition, previous to the damage. And so that work was completed prior to the middle of November. And so the stream gauge is restored to its original configuration there. So this is another image that I took from a video that I had. But essentially, this shows from the water surface level, the, the height of the jump that the fish would have to make to get up here. It's between six and eight feet depending on flows. So just to give you an idea, it's something that the fish just can't do. So this particular project, as I mentioned, involves modifying that, that concrete weir that I showed you. And for those that are unaware, a weir is essentially a small dam or a barrier that is commonly used to measure water flow. And so the project here proposes to lower the jump height of the weir, which would open up about 3.3 miles of Rojo Grande Creek to Steelhead Habitat, which we think is very important. And so the actual construction components of this project involve taking access predominantly from Myrtle Street. There will be a crane that's required to lower equipment and remove concrete from the site. And it will require a short-term road closure, but that would, and that is conditioned based on the draft resolution to require the city approve a traffic control plan before that work starts so that we can be sure that traffic is appropriately routed around the project and it doesn't have any significant impacts on the residents. In addition to the construction access from Myrtle Street, there is an electrical connection that's proposed from Stanley Avenue on the Lucie Mar property. So I actually have an image to show you that now. So the project is proposed to install a temporary power connection from the building here on Lucie Mar's property, run it down Stanley Avenue to a temporary power pole that's down near the creek. And so that's something that they're proposing to do. The, the previous version of this project proposed utilizing a generator, which staff at that time felt would be significantly impactful to the neighborhood based on noise and other emissions. And so staff felt that this particular change in this, in this version of the project was really beneficial to neighbors close to this project. Also, it's important to note that the creek itself will be diverted around the work area to allow the work area to stay dry while construction's occurring. That'll happen in conjunction with California Department of Fish and Wildlife where the stream will actually be diverted into a pipe and around the work site during the duration of construction. That will involve a significant amount of biological surveys to ensure that no animal or plant species is impacted by that work. And there are specific criteria involved if a species of any type is, is found upstream of the diversion. And, and typically, depending on the species, but it would involve relocating that species to a place in the creek that's more suitable for them at the time. There's also another component to this project that will involve the contractor investigating the connection to the downfall structure on the South Bank. In doing some investigation of this area and looking at some of the as-built plans, the applicant's engineering team really wanted to take a look at this specifically because of the potential impacts that can be seen if it is not connected and, and during high flows during the winter. And so part of this project will be to investigate that. Further permitting would be required if that is something that is determined not to be connected. And so we'll sort of await to see their findings, but that is also another component of this project. So here, I've got a picture just showing you, I know it's difficult to see the words on here, but I just wanted to give a reference for how much lower the jump height would be. So we're currently looking at this lighter gray structure is the existing weir and the darker gray structure is the new weir. So you can see fish essentially have to jump over at the lowest point, about six feet higher than what they would have to with the notched weir that they're installing. And so this, the purpose for the notched weir is to allow for a fish passage at both low and high flows. So I just wanted to show here that we're talking about probably a six-foot drop in the overall jump height the fish will have to accomplish. This is also a zoomed-out version of the planting plan, but I will zoom in here. There is a plant list here involved, which entirely comprises native species. And those are broken into four different zones based on the location on the property. And so you can see here that further downstream, Zone 4 is comprised of mostly herbaceous riparian natives. While as you move further upstream, you have more willows and then more seed, more native seeds. And then further away from the creek have upland plants being proposed. And this work will all occur after the construction and is required by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife permitting. So as I mentioned, the city has included a number of conditions of approval in the draft resolution based on conversations that we've had with the Staff Advisory Committee. First of which is that an encroachment permit will be required with an approved traffic control plan. We feel that the previous iteration of the project, which required conditions of approval related to the generator have been mitigated by the use of temporary power. And so those have been removed here. We still are continuing to require a neighborhood notification 30 days in advance of the start of the project. Also, that the applicant obtain all the necessary permits from Califar, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, and the Regional Water Board. As I showed on the planting plan, I know that was fast, but there is no tree removal associated with this project whatsoever. The project does involve a lot of post-planting. And so that will help mitigate some of the damage that's occurred at this site too. I think in conjunction with the stream gauge, this planting plan will really help return this area to a very natural state, which will be, I think should be pretty noticeable. And so also because of the nature of the work, a stormwater pollution prevention plan is required. That's something that will be reviewed by our engineering staff for compliance with all of the appropriate regulations. Furthermore, they anticipate that a section of the fence that's owned by the HOA will need to be removed to facilitate the crane moving equipment in. But that fence will be, is required to be replaced in kind after completion of the project. This project, as I mentioned, also is consistent with a couple of different objectives and policies and our conservation and open space element. And so first of which is that objectives, C/OS2 requires that we safeguard important environmental and sensitive biological resources. Furthermore, our general implementing policy 2-1.6 says that, "City shall protect natural creekside habitat, including opportunities for wildlife habitation, rest, and movement, and also further the restoration of degraded habitat." As you'll see in the staff report, there's a couple of different SEQA exemptions that we have found to be appropriate for this project. Those include Sections 15301 for existing facilities, 15302 for the replacement or reconstruction, also Sections 15304 for minor alterations to land. And I did want to specifically point out that none of the exceptions to the category or exemption set forth in Guideline Section 15300.2 apply to this project. With that said, I'm happy to take questions that you have.
No questions?
Thank you, I have questions. I thought I understood what was happening until you showed the picture with the little divot at the bottom and then you completely lost me. So could you explain how, how the project works again? I apologize, I just, I thought I understood and then this picture made it so that I don't understand.
Yeah, so what you're seeing here is an image of the stream gauge, essentially if you are standing in the middle of the creek looking at it. So what you're seeing is a section of the stream gauge and the lighter gray section from here to here is what is existing. So this will all be removed, all this will be removed. And as you can see, it's essentially a relatively flat piece of concrete and is not intended to facilitate fish passage in any way. Whereas the new stream gauge that will be installed is this darker structure here, which will be installed in this sort of V shape. And essentially, the, the water will still pass over it, but at a much lower elevation. And so the fish have an easier time getting past it.
Thank you, I, I got it, thank you. That was my only question.
Yeah, I wonder if you could go back to the discussion of the downfall because that, that didn't come clear to me. So first off, is, is this the downfall from the, the new, new neighborhood, the, the big drainage facility for, for nuisance, ultimately from Newsland Springs? Is that the downfall they're talking?
We're talking about the drainage channel that runs between Myrtle and Stillwell and, and then heads to Rojo Grande Creek there.
And so when they say connection, so they're currently not connected or maybe not connected? I wonder if you.
I think there's some speculation after some of the engineers looked at the as-built plans for that area that it may not have been connected correctly. And so as part of the project, they'll be investigating that and have funding to correct that if that is an issue because they recognize that if the downfall structure is not correctly connected, it can significantly affect the work that they're going to be doing here. And so the two are really tied together and.
And so they have that funded if, if, as, as a contingency?
That's correct.
All right, all right, thank you.
Do we have a timeline? Is there?
Yeah, so I don't have an exact timeline for how long construction will take. Obviously, we can provide more information on that as we get closer, but they're anticipating this work will start likely in August of 2024.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll open it to the public. So anyone in the public who'd like to comment on this item, now's your chance. All right, and we'll also then go out to Zoom, see if there's anyone there.
There are no members of the public on Zoom.
All right. So with that, I'll bring it back to council for comments and direction.
Okay, thank you for a pretty thorough presentation. I think I understand where, you know, the purpose. And I can't imagine that any fish could have gotten up. I'm laughing, but it's not really funny that eight-foot weir looks very challenging. So I'm glad we're able to move forward. Is that, are we saying we want to move forward? Are we just giving?
We actually have, in the end.
Okay, so, so I would support it. And it sounds, city manager's looking at me like, it's been a long day. It sounds as though we've taken appropriate safeguards to make this as, as small impact as possible on the neighbors that are, are going to be right there when it's happening. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, so when I was in sixth grade, yeah, it's 8/3rd, you're gonna hear a story. When I was in sixth grade, I went to sixth grade camp. And you could pick from a list of different activities. So you could choose to go night hiking, you could choose to pick rocks. I, I chose to save the trout. And so we went up to this creek and the sixth graders had to literally pick up the trout and move them over. So had we considered that? As opposed to, you know, going through this whole process of removing and fixing the weir? Child labor. They just pick them up and they help with that.
I don't believe that has been examined, but I can check with the applicant.
Okay, thank you. So with that, Patrick, thank you very much for the report. That was a very thorough presentation and I did appreciate that. I am in support of waiving the fees, that's what we're doing, right? Waiving, yeah, waiving the fees. Obviously, this is a joint effort with lots of different agencies coming together. A county came, fixed what they needed to fix. So doing our part would definitely be something that can help the fish and I am in support of it. I appreciate what Councilmember Seacrest, it's late, said in regards to all the safeguards and helping with the neighbors. I think that's very important outreach. I, I know Public Works is very good with outreach, so I have no concerns that when the time comes for us to do what we need to do. But we're not, we're not doing the actual work, we're just gonna go out to the public and.
That's correct, yeah. The applicant will be responsible for the notification and then all of the construction activities.
Okay. Yeah, I'm in support to move forward, thank you.
Yeah, I too will, will be supporting this tonight. I, I do sort of feel like I need to comment on sort of, which to me is kind of an extreme, extreme measure to bring that power all the way, all the way down Stanley in order to not have a generator. I, I don't know what the amount of time involved, what the hours would be, but that, that does seem like kind of a serious burden to me to, to this project. And obviously, they, they are willing to, to do it and, and have the funding. But it, it just feels like kind of an, an extreme mitigation to me to, to be, to be stringing that all the way down there. But with that, I'm certainly open to a motion.
Mayor Protam, I'll hopefully make a motion, a resolution, the City Council, the City of Rojo Grande, approving conditional use permit number 23-002 to implement a stream gauge fish passage improvement project on property located within Rojo Grande Creek in proximity to Clarence Avenue and Myrtle Street, APN 077572031, applied for by Creeklands Conservation, approving the requested fee waiver and finding the project exempt from SEQA.
Second.
We have a motion, in a second, we can have a roll call.
Councilmember George?
Yes.
Councilmember Seacrest?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Guthrie?
Yes. And with that, I believe that brings this.
And on a lighter note, I just want to say that day when we saved the fish, they served us tuna for lunch. That irony was not lost on me as a sixth grader, so just saying.
All right. And so do we have any additional communications? I'll give you guys another shot if you want it.
No, I will just say that hearing the news of the passing of Warren Hoag, a dedicated public servant, he served on our, our Architecture Review Committee for 30 years, is a tragic loss. And I think the mayor wanted to adjourn in his name and I would support that.
So with that, I'll, I will adjourn the meeting in, in the name of Warren Hoag, who, who I agree was a longtime, longtime service to the City of Rojo Grande. So you guys all have a good, good Christmas holidays and we have a couple in between. We have a couple of in between.